Let's see. It's not covering. I think we are on. Ready to.
All right. I'll call this meeting to order. This is a regular session of the Mayor Council, City of Bisbee, County of Cochise, State of Arizona. Being held on Tuesday, September 21st, 2021, 7:00 PM. There are council chambers. Real call, please.
Councilmember Louis Pollak.
Here.
Councilmember Joni Jacomino is excused. Councilmember Frank Davis.
Here.
Mayor Ken Budge.
Here.
Councilmember Leslie Johns.
Here.
Councilmember Mel Sweet.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Klein.
Here.
City staff, Steven Pocken, City Manager, Ashley Coronado, City Clerk, Carrie Bagley, Finance Director, Jesus Haro, Public Works Director, Alberti Chave, Police Chief, Jim Richardson, Acting Fire Chief, Joe Estes, City Attorney.
Thank you, everybody, and those that are out there watching us or attending. For tonight's moment of silence, I just wanted to think back about who's still fighting this COVID situation nineteen and in the U.S. we're over six hundred and seventy-one thousand deaths, which in Arizona, that's nineteen, not over nineteen thousand. This is getting bigger than the pandemic was back in, I think, nineteen eighteen. So let's just give a moment of silence to all those and hope that we get better and better about controlling this situation. All right, pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. No proclamations tonight. As far as announcements, just to let everybody know, I am pulling item two E and also item number six. Ones have changed and ones that's not quite ready yet, so those will not be heard tonight. And call the public. I don't think we have anybody signed up. So we'll be moving on to general business. First order is accounts payable.
I move that we pay accounts payable in the amount of two hundred and forty-one thousand, one hundred dollars and seventy-seven cents.
I'll second that.
We have a motion to second. We pay accounts payable. Anybody have questions on what's there? Go ahead.
Okay, on page four, for perks, we have to Garfield Park, we have a thousand fifty-six thirty-four water bill and a ninety-three thirty-three. Why the tiny part?
Yes, so Garfield Park, the one thousand fifty-six dollars and thirty-four cents, that's an accumulation of a, I believe it's two or maybe even three bills. The reason for that was that there was a meter change that Arizona Water made and we had a dispute on one of the bills that they sent us. So they actually owe us a credit, so that credit isn't shown on that. So it's an accumulation of multiple bills.
Okay. And I've got a couple more. On page four also, there is a water break cooler agreement for forty-eight eighty-seven. What agreement do we have for?
Yes, the city council agreement for the water, so we don't buy water for the garage. That is a cooler that is from Centos. It's maintained by Centos also.
Okay, so is that also the same thing on page three? The drinking water for four to seven twelve? It's under building and maintenance.
No, that is, I believe that, let me see here. No, that is the agreement that we have for the post office. The agreement is that we have to provide them with drinking water.
For the post office?
Post office.
Post office account.
In all of Bisbee.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
Don't go anywhere yet. Page nine, there's under the sanitation bill, there's something there for something plastics for over three thousand dollars, three thousand two hundred.
Yes, so that is the approval that we have for new tops for the dumpsters that we acquired from Sierra Vista and it also includes an adapter for the the skid steer so that we can load and unload those with the slots. So it includes a couple of items, but the tops were approved.
Okay, all right, then. It's under five, so we didn't approve it, so I just wanted to.
Absolutely.
Okay, that's all I have. Anyone else? Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the accounts payable now at two hundred and forty-one thousand, one hundred and seventy-seven cents. Could I have a real call, please?
Councilmember Pollak.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Johns.
Aye.
Councilmember Sweet.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Aye. Motion passes. An honestly six zero. Moving on to the consent agenda. Tonight basically consists of three sets of minutes. One application approval to the Civil Service Commission and I pulled item E, so the last one is a special license application. Anyone have anything to pull? Same note by the motion, please.
I move that we approve the consent agenda names A, B, C, D, and F.
I'll second that. We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented, items A, B, C, D, and F. Real call, please.
Councilmember Pollak.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Johns.
Aye.
Councilmember Sweet.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Aye. Motion passes and honestly six zero. Second to get down to my. Item number three. This is discussion and possible approval for the Bisbee Arts Commission to sponsor a central school project, Plain Air Festival, twenty twenty-one, in the amount of nine hundred dollars. Anybody want to present this or?
I'll present.
Okay, yeah.
So the nine hundred dollars was requested of the Arts Commission by Central School to cover the costs of running their Plain Air Festival. The festival is October sixth to tenth and includes a Jers pop-up show with artists in Hugree, a nocturne painting on subway, a fast draw and paint session in Grassy Park, a session of painting the view of San Jose Peak, and a wet paint sale at Central School. And if you guys want to learn more about this, you can go to the Central School website and all the information about it is there.
Thank you. Just as an added note, I was so impressed in what they made off their little cigarette machine last night. Amazing, so that pretty well pays for this in one month. Hey, do you like to make a motion? Is there any further discussion? Okay?
I move to get down to it.
Yeah, I know.
And then I will make the motion. Thanks, Mom. Oh, I need the pack.
Oh, you do?
Yeah.
I'll tell you when I'll make it.
Thank you.
I move to approve the sponsorship by the Bisbee Arts Commission to sponsor Central School Project Plain Air Festival, twenty twenty-one, in the amount of nine hundred dollars.
Second.
Have a motion and I'll give you the second. And. Do I need a vote on this one? Is this money?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Councilmember Pollak.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Johns.
Aye.
Councilmember Sweet.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Aye. Motion passes. You have a sweet five zero. Moving on. Now I have to go down to four, so. Thank you. All right, number four, this is a discussion of possible approval of Resolution R dash twenty-one oh nine, authorizing the Governor's Office of Highway Safety Grant for a twenty twenty-one highway safety grant in the amount of four thousand five hundred and eighty-six dollars and sixty-six cents for the purpose to enhance traffic records enforcement and appointing Albert V. Chave, Chief of Police, as the agent for the City of Bisbee. Chief Chave.
Evening, Mayor, Council, members of the public and staff. Before you, we applied for a grant with the Governor's Office of Highway Safety for this amount, for equipment to supplement the Trax software that you authorized us to purchase along with the county, I think probably about a year ago, maybe eight months ago. This is, this will allow us to utilize the rest of that software. It's kind of included in Spillman, so we didn't really have a great big choice of whether or not to get in on or not, but the county brought us in under their umbrella and gave us a really good rate at that and so it's costing us much less annually. But with this equipment, which is basically going to be a scanner and a printer that will be installed in ten patrol cars, this will allow the use of electronic tickets, citations, cutting down staff time for records and transporting those citations back and forth and entering them into the system. This will allow them to be entered into Spillman directly, uploaded, and then also citations rather than hand filling them out, it will be printed, generated electronically. And it's going to greatly reduce time, the officer's time on a traffic stop on the side of the road and should help in records management as well. So we are grateful that they're willing to give us this, that amount that they are granting us. The Trax system, as I said, will outfit ten police cars. The only cost to us is going to be approximately eighty-three dollars. We're just a little bit short on, I guess, I think the tax at the end came out a little higher than the.
Great.
Well, when we asked for a quote, we got it, but there was a slight error and it was eighty-three dollars off. So our portion of that would be eighty-three dollars to get to four thousand five hundred eighty-six.
I don't know, might be your first.
Questions?
Yeah.
Mel, go ahead.
So is this to enhance the existing system you currently have in the cars or? Can you elaborate on?
Yes, so it's our data software, our CAD, our computer automated dispatch system, our recording system with Spillman. This is an arm of Spillman that we have paid for and we're able to utilize some of this throughout the system. This grant that the Governor's Office gave us or is willing to give us is going to allow us to use all of the parts of this software that we've already paid for so we can utilize it fully.
Okay, so you have the system now.
Yes.
How about the ongoing cost? Will there be additional costs as we go in for maintenance, for upgrading? I mean, will there be additional costs in the future?
So there'll be additional costs to the software, which is a Spillman user fee that we pay annually to Spillman that we do budget for. This equipment itself is a one-time cost unless, of course, something breaks or something malfunctions and needs to be replaced, then there might be a cost for that as time goes on. I did, as I always check to see what kind of extended warranty I can get. They do not offer extended warranty on these products because they just don't, you know, there's so much technology changing all the time. Unfortunately, what we buy today, two or three years down the road, we might be looking at another grant to upgrade our equipment at that point. So they don't offer an extended warranty. It's a standard, I think, one-year's manufacturer's warranty.
So in the future, probably we'll have to budget for this.
Correct.
Because we will have additional expenses.
Unless, unless we can get more funds from.
Not, so we need to make sure we have the money.
Correct.
Okay.
Sure, go ahead.
How long have we had spend?
We went to Spillman in two thousand and ten, if I remember correctly. May of two thousand and ten. I was here.
Yeah. Okay, because I remember it was, you know, when you had nothing coming and it was going to really help us and it just seems like it's only been a couple of years. So we don't have, I mean, we're not close to like outgrowing that technology, are we?
No, no, Spillman's updated on a regular basis and Spillman is a huge company and it's been around for a really long time. Our, at the time in two thousand and ten, our dispatch system, our records management system was obsolete, no longer really supported, we had to look to something else. The county was willing to bring us all in. All Cochise County law enforcement agencies are now on Spillman and there's two main servers, Sierra Vista has their own, the county has their own and everybody, everybody else falls under the county. So we all contract with the county, which is a benefit to us because if we had to purchase Spillman and the stuff that goes along with it, the servers and everything, all the hardware, we would never be able to afford it. So the county lets us piggyback on them, they maintain it for us, they keep it up and running and we're grateful to them for that.
Thank you.
Two really quick ones, since this is partly about giving tickets. Not that I've ever had one. I always remember you have to sign something.
Correct.
How do you sign if this is electronic?
So there is a, most of the tablets today are touchscreen and there is an opportunity to fix your.
So the officer will take the touchscreen to?
The fender typically comes to the driver or the passenger window of the patrol car and that's where the, all that business is taken.
I was wondering that.
This will also help us with traffic accidents as well. So there's a module of this as well that will integrate what used to be a long drawn-out form that was handwritten for years. They laugh at me now when I try to do one the whole way because they don't do it that way anymore. But what this does is allow the auto-population of the forms from the information that you've already entered into the computer. So instead of having to write the report and put the information in there and then fill out the ticket with the same information and fill out the accident report. It's one-time and it auto-populates all of it. So it's definitely a time-saving piece of equipment.
And then it prints out a ticket for you to give to the offender.
Correct, and then it automatically sends it over to the court so there's no lag and somebody going to pay their fine and the citation isn't there yet.
So the only thing I would, and I know it's not part of this, but giving some reports on how this works, how, what your call volume is and that stuff out of Spillman would be something I think that could come to us, you know, maybe quarterly too much, but at least biannally. I know you generally do it during budget season, but maybe more often than not, I would know how we're fitting in with the call volume. That's just a little add-on, I'm not outside of scope here, but I just want to add that. All right, any other questions?
Just one more.
Oh, sure.
So I started this.
I'm sorry.
Chief, you said this would be more efficient. So where do you expect, where will the saving be? Are we going to save on manpower? Is it going to be saving in paperwork? Where are we going to see the outcome, the saving? Because you said efficient savings.
So it will definitely be in time. It's a time-saving measure is what this is. It will not save us in manpower, unfortunately. Literally, it won't save us in manpower, but when you think about an officer spending thirty minutes on the side of the road issuing a citation, that we can now cut that time down to fifteen or twenty minutes, that's more time that that officer has to do other parts of their job. So the less time and the quicker we have that vehicle move down the road and the officer off of that stop, the safer it is for everybody involved. The other motorists, the person that was stopped, and the officer as well.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, you may. Do I have a motion?
I move to adopt Resolution R dash twenty-one dash zero one, which will allow the Bisbee Police Department to accept the Governor's Office of Highway Safety Grant in the amount of four thousand five hundred and eighty-six dollars and sixty-six cents for the purpose to enhance traffic records enforcement and appointing Albert V. Chave, Chief of Police, as the agent for the City of Bisbee.
Please second.
We have a motion and a second. I'm just going to say approve item four. Because I have a vote, please.
Councilmember Pollak.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Johns.
Aye.
Councilmember Sweet.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Aye, motion passes. Five zero. All right, one more for you, chief. This is item number five. This is discussion of possible approval to allow the Bisbee Police Department to purchase fifteen DHF P-25 F-7000 portable T-PAD radios for eleven communications for public safety departments to include chargers, antennas, three-year extended warranty using police special fund account in the amount of eighteen thousand one hundred and ninety-three dollars and thirty-one cents. This is state contract personally. Go ahead, chief.
Again, Mayor, Council, thank you. Our radio project that we've been working on for the last two years now, part of that project included the purchase of handheld portable radios for both, for public safety, for both police and fire. With those, the grant funds that we reached out for, the dollars that we asked corporations for, unfortunately, didn't come in to the amount that we were hoping. And so we weren't able to buy as many radios in that project as we hoped to. The fire department, I believe, got fifteen radios and they have twenty-one staff. So there's six people on the fire department who don't have a radio, a new radio assigned to them. So the hope with this is to finish that off, cover the rest of the fire department so that everybody, all of public safety is one hundred percent with their own issue to them, a radio. We don't have situations where people are using the same or borrowing each shift. That could be a challenge in a major fire. Everybody needs to have a radio and two guys are sharing one or two personnel are sharing one, that could be a challenge. So we want to make sure that everybody has one issue to them and was responsible for the equipment to be issued. The remainder radios, remaining radios are, again, the intent is to become the cash radios that we have with public safety in Bisbee that we no longer have to reach out to fire tomorrow, their cash when we need additional radios, which we do oftentimes throughout the year. The stair climb, the coaster race, everybody gets a radio and we don't have enough today to put one in everybody's hand and that becomes a challenge. The other good part about this, when I say cash, people think that it's just going to be in a box, kind of sitting there and break glass in case of emergency, but that's really not going to be the intent either because we also have our Arizona Rangers that we support. They have their own radios. They use their own grant funds and they were able to purchase radios several years ago to come up to the new standard that we're at with our radios today. However, those radios are no longer compliant on our new upgraded system. So their radios are now obsolete. This cash radios will allow us to utilize them when they come out to support some functions like the Maya Chi Festival, the, all the major events that we have, you know, the little slow balls coming up. We can now give them a radio that we can be confident that they'll be able to communicate back and forth with dispatch and the other officers. Also, these radios, they are an electronic device and as we all know, they are subject to failure at times. It can be just to a malfunction in the radio, it could be a, one could get dropped and damaged. We have a three-year manufacturer's warranty on these radios and then also on top of that, we purchased for the city an additional three-year extended warranty. So these radios are covered for six years. Now that we have this, with these extra radios, we'll have a radio when somebody comes to me and says, "My radio's malfunctioning," I can take that, send it in for repair and have radios on the shelf to issue them so that they're not going without. And that's always a concern as well. We have two radios from the fire department that had some little issues that are going back to for repair. Because we're short-staffed at the police department, I was able to have two radios, police radios, and I was able to issue those to firefighters while I have their radios repaired. So if we all are at full staff, there won't be any extras to do that with and this is going to be a big help to get us along the way.
Okay, just quickly, the backup material that was in this was a little bit confusing. So tell me the, what the actual word means, police special fund.
I don't think you were the only one that had that question, sir. So this is CARES Act money that we're requesting use for this. The, I talked to Carrie and make sure that that was coded appropriately and I might mess this up a little bit, but some of that money will be put into a special account so you can track property where it was spent. So that's where it needs to be and it is correct at that location. Does that make sense?
Yeah. We have eighteen thousand. How much?
Yes, simply put, the money that's going to buy these radios is ARBA money. So it's from the federal money that we discussed a few weeks ago and we've set aside for expenditure for this project. Basically, what will happen is the money will be transferred from the ARBA account to the police special fund account and then will be purchased going to that.
Okay, great, I just wanted to clear all that up, so.
Yeah, I do recall. I may have created some confusion. No, I mean, we can't do all that. That's fine, please. Anyway.
Mel?
Yeah, Steve, to the chief. So is this money coming from the CARES Act?
Well, it's not, the CARES Act was two years ago.
Okay.
The money that this is being spent from now is the ARBA fund that we talked about putting funds in sometime back and we have put fifteen portables for eighteen thousand dollars for the radio project from that into, into police radios. So technically, the bottom line is the money is coming from the rescue plan.
Yeah, this is just the question.
This is the rescue plan.
Thousand eight hundred.
Yeah, okay. So, but just, just any continuing question?
Sure, sure. Go ahead.
I mean, to Steve or to the chief? So this money at the beginning, when we did our budgeting, was not included, am I right? So it wasn't like the, the chief of police, what they did, the budget, didn't ask for the money in the beginning, at the beginning of the year, am I correct?
Not with the budget, that's correct.
Okay, so this came later on? Just so.
Looks like it is.
Can't hear.
Okay, back in. So why wasn't this budgeted for in the beginning? Because we didn't need it then and we need it now, or when we found out we have the money, we decided to do this? That's my question.
You will be asked to consider a lot of expenditures over the balance of the fiscal year because this money was put in our account on July second after the budget was adopted.
Okay.
Okay, so technically there was, and Carrie probably knows the figure better than I do, we had anticipated receiving some of this money earlier in the year, which was already budgeted in the general fund, but we ended up receiving slightly more than we. So it is in the revenue. but we ended up receiving slightly more than we, so it is in the revenue section of your budget, in the general fund. And so we just had to create a new line item in the general fund, because this is a different bill than we anticipated the money coming from the last time. So, so yes, the money was anticipated.
Was anticipated before this came along, wasn't it? Okay, that's my question.
Wasn't broken down into each place where it was going? Correct me if I'm wrong.
That's correct, because you didn't receive the money until July second, so.
It's hard to break it down, you don't.
But Council, and Mel, correct me if I'm wrong, I think it might have been slightly before you were appointed?
Yeah.
That Council went over all of this list, which you received the list of later on?
Yeah, I did.
Okay.
Alright, more questions? Anybody? Comments? Well, entertain a motion for radios.
I move to allow the Bisbee Police Department to purchase fifteen BHFP-25F-7000 portable T-PAD radios from Levitt Communications for public safety departments to include chargers, antennas, three-year extended warranty using police special fund account in the amount of eighteen thousand one hundred and ninety-three dollars and thirty-one cents. That's state contract pricing.
Second. I have a motion and a second for item number five, purchase the radios. Vote, please.
Councilmember Pollock.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Johns.
Aye.
Councilmember Sui.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Aye, motion passes, six zero. Well, leaving a note, going on to six, that'll lead us to the city managers' report. I know it might make a difference, but all those are for the other ones. I was just going to make a record for the meeting, so.
Sorry, just.
Vote. Just as a reminder, not on the agenda, but we will be holding a special meeting this week to talk about the funding for the lock droplets, and that should occur Thursday night.
Uh huh, five thirty.
So that's.
Five thirty?
We'll decide.
Okay, five thirty, six, we'll see.
I was going to go six because it was for Johnny, but she's not going to be able to make it, so we can pick it up any time soon. That's okay, everybody? Alright, I'll take a motion for adjournment.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion to adjourn and a second, all in favor, certified by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, aye, very enough, chair of adjournments, we are adjourned.